Evening, we've got a lot to get through so let's crack on as quickly as we can. Apologies for absence. Do you have any apologies?
Yeah, I've had apologies from councillor Fuller. Um, councillor King.
Are we happy?
Not me.
Not councillor.
Forget it, forget it, we want to fix it.
Are we happy to accept those apologies? Yep, fantastic, thank you very much indeed. Declarations of interest, of closing residency at St Peters Road as always. Any other declarations of interest? Lovely, very much. Minutes of the previous meeting from the 15th of June 2021. I had one question, I suppose. We mentioned that we would contact highways about the parking around the church. Have we heard back to that at all?
Um, no.
So worth chasing.
Thank you.
Worth chasing.
Yes, can do it.
Sure. Any other points about the minutes at all? Can I have a proposer, something, a second up? Everyone happy with that? Thank you very much. So, public participation, and we've got three different groups who want to present tonight. And first of all, can we have Alan from Hartstark? Oh, do you? Do you want something to do next time? Do we move the minute of this lies on?
Yes, we will, yeah. It's good to be in our.
First of all, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing us to come and just outline where we currently are on Hartstark. And we'll look at behalf of some couples and we'll put a point of those in a few minutes. Just having issues to refer to around Caesar's or the next of a student. Okay. Now, the British Heart Foundation started the Hartstark scheme about 20 years ago. And it was providing training right across the United Kingdom in emergency life support. Now, we started the scheme here in 2011 and all we now in lockdown and have been locked down for 18 months or whatever. But we were targeting restarting in South Africa and whether we'd actually manage to do that is not just up to agency. Because certain other issues have come up, of course, some difficulties, okay? We started the scheme in 2011 and during that period of time, we've actually provided, I don't know, something more than 200 training sessions right across the district. And some more than 200 people have been trained. We were requested by the council by the Heartbreak in, I think it's in, well, 2016, could we apply to the British Heart Foundation to get some deep fibre, just for the town, which they never cost. Which we did, which was a nice application and they were quite successful. And they became fully operational on June 16th. And we also acquired later for a community grant, which you did manage to be granted us and that led us to the land issue of our equipment. I mean, the work, we've been all over the place. In fact, you get into training courses, basically on our video, we had once upon a time, we were operating in the surgery on Saturday. And for the general population, the people who applied, of course. And then everything else we were everywhere, right? And so it was very active and that. And the training sessions cover several issues. They go, the signs, the symptoms, the action for today when somebody's suffering from heart attack, how to deal with choking and severe bleeding. Everyday occurrences of these, how to assist somebody who's unconscious, you know, how to recognise and take actions without the address. Lots of classic cases in this, this town where, you know, the actual application of these techniques has actually been successful. I would learn how to recover position, learn how to be proud of a resuscitation and learn how to use an A T, you know, more than one A T is now being. Just, just to give you some of the stages of the training sessions. I mean, personally at school installed the defibrillator because they had a young man who, I think was playing football, collapsed and he went to his girlfriend's and he died. And we went along there at their request and provided trainings and stuff. Bricks top are a classic case. I mean, Bricks top really wanted to set up a village of lifesavers, really. We had several, in fact, I don't know if we have to show you, but we had five training sessions there, along with Bricks top junior school, where you went there to, 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 to students, okay? And we actually ran a training session here for the council staff. I mean, that particular picture was used for a product promotion and session promotion. Okay. Now, we are trained by the British Heart Foundation, we're affiliated to them and we're credited to provide them. I mean, we're funded by the local authorities, that's by Secetition. So those two situations give us credibility. So we always make sure that people are aware that that's who trains and what training we have. Now, well, didn't take it by surprise, but in fact, when the British Health Team was coming, but in fact, we had a notification from the British Heart Foundation that the Hartstark programme is going to close on the 20th of June. So stop now. And it will be replaced by Call Push and Rescue. Now, Call Push and Rescue focuses solely on charging upon the resuscitation and on defibrillator awareness. And the sessions are video led, so you can get the video, you can get the equipment, very familiar, and you can start up into the training. How effective that will be if you have no idea really what you're doing, I have great doubts. I mean, we, we, certainly we could do that, but there were several questions we would ask about whether we would actually, that's the session. Now, when the British Heart Foundation communicated with us and said, well, we are closing the Hartstark system right across the country. These are the things that they said. All Hartstark training materials and course content must cease to be used. You are not authorised to teach any Hartstark programme on behalf of the British Heart Foundation, including any you already have online, which is not about any online aids you will access. You cannot use a British Heart Foundation name or logo, logo. All instructor certificates, probably mine, it seems, right, will be revoked and your group will cease to be affiliated to the British Heart Foundation and you won't be covered by the British Heart Foundation public liability insurance. And it's not. Now, when we received that, I mean, we were a bit surprised. We expected that sort of things to come because it actually stopped using new schemes as early as, I don't know, 2014. So, but nevertheless, when they actually did that, what they did, they actually said, we need to use the British Heart Foundation, they, they just credibility. The training process we've been doing there meant that we were credible and capable of applying the appropriate training. So that actually really undermines all that material. Okay, so we are now, we're faced with deciding what we do now and what, where we go from here. And there are lots of issues, but these are the main ones. It is very, very important from a credibility point of view that we are associated somewhere other, I mean, I don't think probation is allowed, with, you know, a, a, an organisation that is responsible and recognises an organisation that is responsible. Gives you credibility fundamentally. We clearly have got to continue our training because we are constantly trained by the British Heart Foundation and that's ready. And we need instructor certification and we don't have that now. So we're discussing that with the first responders and with the NHS, I wouldn't say, the same way to set up that situation. Which always, we'll, we'll also need to recruit more of the volunteers and, you know, to have credibility and associated with the major operation is absolutely key to that. The other thing is that we have to decide which course content to actually use. Do we actually use the existing Hartstark course, which we can do and reorganise without breaking any of the rules that the British Heart Foundation set? Or do we concentrate on call push rescue? And our preference currently is to stay with the Hartstark course as it is. But we need to look at that. Now, the training course learning, in, in, in what we've been doing and what we've been using, obviously, has been the, the, the meeting room of the animal surgery. We've been using that once and again over the years of the program training courses. And that again helps the credibility because of the rights of training in adoption surgery. So, but that, but we must know when we're going to get back to that soon, I have no idea whether we ever will. So the question is, will we be able to, if we were going on to use that house, which will probably be, I don't know, once and again, God, in that, on a Saturday. Okay. And then, of course, we have a question for the liability insurance. So really, of those are the issues we have to address. And, and really, we're looking, if possible, for any support that we can get from that town council to help, to give us credibility, to help us to maintain our right to, to continue.
Thank you very much indeed. Does anyone have any questions at all? Brilliant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public liability insurance question, Mark. Given that you're asking, but aren't we politely trying to hint that if you're looking towards the town council, the fund, your public liability insurance premium?
Not, not necessarily.
Well, excuse me, but I'm wondering if you want to say yes or no.
It's, it's probably both, but I know that's all the truth, but it is a question of, obviously, the council has public liability insurance. Whether, not knowing what the ambition of that insurance cover is, we didn't know whether possibly if we were using the premises to put on these training courses, that insurance might extend to, to cover us doing that. So that's a question that we would ask of you, please. If, if not, it is feasible for us to obtain public liability insurance in our own right, but obviously at a cost. I've done some investigations, it looks at our public customers in the region of £250 a year, which would be another £250 a year that we would have to raise to, to get there.
Understood. Any other questions?
I'm, I'm trying to work up, are you forming a breakaway group of some sort? Or is your organisation splitting into two? Or, and also what is it you're not going to be allowed to do under this new training that you've previously done?
Well, I can say the last point first, my apologies. There, there, there is nothing that we've been doing that we can't do. We, we can produce a course, put exactly the same content, provided we don't mention British Heart Foundation throughout it. We're not going against what they've told us we must not do. No, we're not forming a breakaway group. We, we are a group in our own entity that was formulated when we were, Alan and I were road terms. And really, all we wanted to do, we wanted to maintain the service to the local community that we've been doing for these last number of years. But, you know, we, we just feel that at the moment, we're a bit out of line. And, you know, if you wish, we're looking for a bit of comfort like it, if I can put it in those terms, to wrap around ourselves, to, to give us a bit of confidence going forward. I, I apologise if, you know, what we're asking is, is a bit faulty, but we're really trying to pull our way through this ourselves at the moment.
Understood.
And, and, you know, if, if you've got any further questions, rather take up more time, you know, please, and put Alan's contact details, let us know what they are, we'll answer them as best we can. And, and then if you can take time to, to consider how you might be able to help in any form, we'd be very, very grateful. But we, we're passionate about, passionate about what we do. We feel that more and more people still out there that don't know about how to perform CPR and how to use a defibrillator. And the more people that we can spread the word to, give them the opportunity to practise with letter.
I mean, it is very important, I mean, there are lots of examples. I mean, there's an example in, in, I don't know, about three, four weeks now. The father was on the day reading his son a story and all of a sudden he comes out and he's a son in one of the front of his road. Two ladies, of course, who were neighbours, actually knew what to do and they came back and they found that he detected a reaction, probably cardiac arrest, they thought of the, you know, and all right, of course, response activity. And he's like, hey. Now, you know, if they don't know what to do, I mean, that, end of story.
Hmm, yep, understood.
So it's only important that we can send as many people as possible there.
We don't have this as an agenda item, so I don't think we can make a decision tonight, if that's right. But if our next meeting's in September, if the next couple of months we keep conversing and seeing where we are, we might be able to put things together by that. Brilliant, thank you very much indeed for your time, much appreciated, thanks for what you've done. Next presentation, Robert, we can talk just about potholes. I think we've got your presentation up on the big screen, if we're liking.
Thank you, I'll try and be as brief as I possibly can. But I propose to, I, I think you've all seen the slides. Already, but I propose to go through them all quickly and I, there are examples that I think highlight issues that are more, more than, more wider than just angle. And I think should be raised with North North House Council. This first road is Rock Road, which in my opinion is the worst road in Angle on highway quality. And I did a freedom of information request to N M C and I have, I got a spreadsheet back from them. For the past 10 years, all the repairs that they've carried out, I added it all up and in the past 10 years, they've filled in 154 different issues with the surface of the road. But in that time, they have not resurfaced the road at all. And I think it desperately needs resurfacing. But I think there's a, there's a deeper issue in there that they, they just fill in individual potholes and deal with individual things. But I think they're, they need to, in their decision making, they need to take a more general view of roads and try and deal with issues like that in a different way. For instance, they, they often measure potholes when they can be reported and they find that some potholes are, are deep enough to meet their requirements to be filled in, but then they leave a few others next to it, it's not quite deep enough. And it's that sort of thing, I think, that they need to work on. Could I have the next slide, please? This is just another picture of, of Rock Road, you can see how, how the various potholes all in the line, but then there are, you can clearly see where things have been, previous potholes have been filled in. This is a path across, it's a, a little piece of grass between Wentworth Drive and Colton Close up in the north Landall. I've reported this path three times now, I think. And every time they've come back and said it's not a safety issue, well, it might not be a safety issue, but it's, it's falling apart. And I think perhaps the tree roots have got something to do with that. And I think, as I said to them on the reports, I think issues like this need to be dealt with as soon as possible, rather than kicking the can down the road, rather than the footpath like seems to be happening. Because issues like this just get worse among the left because of the, the environmental factors like rain and cold weather and the fact that there are, there's vegetation going out of the cracks. If we go to the next slide. This is, this is the path up the centre of the Hillfield and Creed Road estate. It's also falling apart. I'm not entirely sure what the issue is, but I have raised it a few times as well. And after a few chasing requests, they have dealt with a little bit of it, as you can see. I'm grateful for, for this. But I think there's another example here in that the road is clearly forming apart, there's clearly some issue with the way it's been built. However, they're, instead of looking at the whole road and thinking, right, let's work out what the issue is that's causing it to fall apart. I think that the guidance that they're given only lets them just deal with individual bits that meet their standards. But I think, again, this is another example of dealing with issues now would be better than, than leaving it and eventually letting the other bits pass their standards to be repaired. If we go, this is the final slide. This is not actually adopted yet. This, this is from a path at the very top of the estate, which is about seven years old now. And it's already fallen apart and it's only seven years old. And I think that before it gets adopted, I think the developers should be asked to come and sort these issues out because I don't see that it's fair on the taxpayers who will no doubt eventually end up picking up the bills to sort this out. But I think it looks also that there's something more fundamentally wrong with the way these have been built. And I think that needs to be investigated before they're adopted. And that's everything, thank you.
Brilliant, thank you very much indeed, Robert. Any questions, Rupert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As for Robert, I think it should be commended for, for your careful examination and report. Certainly, the various issues you've highlighted were gripping. So what I would suggest subject to this agreement is a conference be made for you to meet Sarah Barnwell, a local N M, N M C British engineer. So she can, so she can visit these sites with you, discuss methods, but she's a very good professional engineer. She'll be able to take a view on what can be done to, to apply N M Cs overall injury standards for these things right. In particular, as to that one where, where it's not, has not yet been adopted, I would hope for an N M C. Actually, we know that some developers are more lax than others, it's a deadline job, getting them to do what they have to do. So, there's a lot that can be done and should be done, so I'm quite sure that Sarah would have a word with the secret as necessary to ginger up the developments.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that, I think it needs sorting out, so.
Are we, are you okay if we send the presentation to Sarah?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then maybe put you in contact?
I can, I can send my, my notes as well, I can type my notes up.
Sure, sure.
On the slides, yeah.
Brilliant, thank you very much indeed.
So, yes, just, just three questions. Can I ask, you, you mentioned you reported, have you done all that through Street Cop?
Yes, yes.
What information have you had back in relation to their timeframe in terms of repairs? Because they're, all of those have been reassessed and they assess them based on depth, height, whatever else, and they'll decide that. So we can throw out a, probably a busy person to do the, the, the North, North House. But if they're isolated, but they're already being dealt with, then they'll, they'll assess those on a, on a category, I suspect.
Rock roads, they have said they've got 25 potholes apparently, they're going to be filling in within 26 weeks of February. But then I think, I think, as I said, I think the whole road needs to be resurfaced. I've asked for that to happen and, and I think it looks from their, their own notice that they're only just planning to fit in various potholes all along the road. The other, the other, the path across Wentworth Drive and Colton Close, they just said it's not bad enough, doesn't meet their standards to be repaired. And here on the path up the centre of Hillfield Road and Creed Road, again, only those two little bits meet their standards, but the rest of the road is, the rest of the path is clearly got something wrong with how it's been built. It's because it's falling apart, but not quite to the same standards as the bits they've patched up were.
So we might be talking about, sorry, may I for a minute? So we might be talking about two different issues. One is a planning issue in terms of somebody not complying with their planning rules when they're building the site, it's not built in accordance with whatever the plan is. And the other one is the fact that possibly North North House or whoever does highways now are not fulfilling their agreement in terms of preparing roads sooner.
I think.
Are those the two issues?
I think the major issue really is the, the actual standards that they work by, the, which is, I think, something that needs to be taken to. Because I think a lot of the major issues, a lot of the major issues that are kind of sort of become urgent, but are on the way to become urgent. They get left out just because they're not like, they're not quite, the pothole isn't quite deep enough, it doesn't quite meet their, I think that's more the, the major issue.
If, if I may ask, I think your previous research as well, that the standards are quite hard to.
Right, to me.
They're quite hard to decide and the risk assessment process is quite hard.
I've actually got a copy, they sent me a copy of the, their book list as well, so.
Cool. Let's put you in contact with Sarah and see what's in there. Rupert?
Yeah, just to add, just to add, really, from our know-how, having served three terms as a county councillor, and also as a former officer of the European Street Transport, where I worked for and with engineers. Civil engineering is an art. Standards are not set in stone. In fact, engineering is derived from Ranthwa Jhali, it means the application of sensible structure. I'm quite sure Sarah Barnwell is good at, at obtaining mystery modifications that are relative priorities and needs.
I think the issue is with their, their standards is, they don't, I don't think the highways officers are given the power to have that reasonable judgement in. What's an issue that needs to be dealt with and what isn't.
At middle and junior levels, perhaps, but on the other hand, they can fall upwards.
Yeah.
If it gets nearer the top, then listen, decisions are taken.
Yeah.
Brilliant, thank you very much indeed, Robert. If we crack on, we've got another item, consideration of requests from interested parties, do we have anything? No, and then we've got a town matter section, including receiving an update on Flattened Field. I think that's where Paul and Tony take the floor with a presentation on Flattened Field.
Hello, my name is Paul Eadweard, I'm Chair of O D A, recently became Chair of the Flattened Field Campaign, which we have looked to reinvigorate as part of the Blooming Ambulance, the transition and the business association have worked on. So we've looked at Flattened Field and seen that actually, you know, from our perspective, that, I'll be honest with you, I only went there about four months ago. And before that, I thought about Flattened Field, what's it going to say there? But having been there, you feel, actually, this is a worthwhile space, it could be a really useful community asset. And spurred on by a meeting with Annabelle, Catherine Brooke, who was due to meet George.
Karen.
Can, Canber, isn't it? Yeah, George Canber, who's the executive director of Places Economy. She was asking, well, could we help with a vision? Hence, we've come up with a vision document, which I think we all have in your discussions. side. I haven't had a chance to read it. You know, from my perspective and from the team's perspective, one of the things we thought was probably, you know, needed addressing from the past was to say, well, if we save it, what are we going to use it for? So that really was our objective, really, to, sorry, you've sidelined us. So, you know, we're looking to create a different approach, basically, okay, in the past, it's been looked at to say as a town green, that was rejected, unfortunately. So what are we doing to actually see if we can spur people on to engender some enthusiasm for saving the field and, you know, pace our next steps, really? The vision we hope will engender a broader populace. So if you have any feedback on what we've proposed, we'd love to hear about it. So what we're looking to do now is to move that on. Now, we understand from the meeting with George Canber that he said, apparently, why would we want to sell this? I guess it depends on how you put the intonation on that, how it might appear, because, you know, I'm sure if you put some executive homes on it, it could be a very valuable piece of real estate for Northhampton. I'm not saying that's what they're necessarily going to do, because apparently there isn't any planning on that, proposed planning on that at this point in time. So, you know, what are we going to do? These are sort of our next steps, really. Engage people, see if we can get some support from other people, key stakeholders, raise awareness, and then hopefully come back with a proposal that we will probably review in advance at some point in the future. To do that, we formed a project team, had a meeting about the weeks back now, where we actually got together quite a group of people that are quite keen to help and do this, this quite big ambitious proposal. We were then creating also alongside that comprehensive communications plan. And we also looked to see whether we can engage more people on using the field, because I think one of the problems is, like me, people don't go there. They haven't been there, they don't realise what it is or what it could be. And therefore, we don't get that all the spectrum of people supporting us, saying, look, actually, how much you have this? So if you move on to the next slide, please. So we do have now some teams in place. Our next task really was to look back in a bit more detail and come up with some more detailed plans. So if you would like to stick off to the next slide, please. We have a sort of outline, timeline, that will see us develop and, you know, finish creating a documentation and things, and then at the end of the year, come back together with a final document, describe what we would like to do in more detail, with collaboration from other people, maybe themselves, to then take that, hopefully, to a town meeting and then possibly to N N C for review. I think there is one big question here, really, and that's sort of raised its head this week, because we have already sort of made some ripples in the water. We've asked for some dog proof bins that we've put on to the field, because people are walking through with their dogs and it is becoming a bit messy out there. You know, we also met the, the annual council walking around the field and, you know, encouraged by a local councillor, we thought, well, wouldn't it be nice if they could hold an event on there? Now, actually, the reality is, we handle, doesn't tell them, and we can't make decisions about what we do on it. It's effectively a priority at this point in time. So I think one of the key questions we need to ask sooner or later is really, who's the decision maker and what, what's their timeline for deciding what they're going to do there? So I think they are reviewing all their assets as part of the time and, you know, Canber actually gets some feedback on that from them and us. So for the final slide, hopefully, you like the vision document. Hopefully, it's held some more interest, rather than just saying, actually, we would like to keep it as a field. I'm just saying, what we've tended to do with that is to put everything in there. So if we achieve 60 or 70% of what we propose, I think we'd be doing very well. We have had a pledgeback from Animal School, which needs to say, yes, look, we are still supportive of you in terms of that Flattened Field remaining as a field and that being a community asset moving to the future. And they will pay some money if we were to purchase the field, if that's something that we had to do. We were looking for dog proof bins potentially to go on the field, but I'm not sure we can do that now from the email that I've received earlier today from Annabelle via the Dublin Services and N N C. We would like to hold a bit of a picnic and a music event in the field on the 28th of August. We may run into similar challenges from N N C with relation to usage of the field at that point. I don't know. I'd quite like to ask the question and see what they think, because, you know, and the reason for doing that would be to engage a broader quotient of Animal's populace. You know, if we can get more people onto that field to appreciate what it's like, then I think actually we stand a chance of engendering a broader sense of support from our community. However, what I don't want to do is to spend ages doing a fabulous plan, only to find at the last minute that actually N N C have already decided what they're going to do and they've sold it to consultants or whoever, builders, and we just wasted that time, I've got a better thing to do with my life than spend five months developing something that I don't have to work on. So that's where we are. Hopefully, we could work together as a partnership to, to move this forward. So I really think it could be a fabulous asset for the town.
Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed, Paul. Flattened Field comes up later on our agenda as well. Gerry, you were at the meeting with Annabelle. Do you want to add anything or?
I did something, a couple of little. Yeah, I'm nominated link to transition animal, like kind of in my mind at least, this is sort of Blooming and transition animal, Flattened Field, they'll sort of spark each other. So I've been, I'm a big, big old anyway, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Very, very welcome.
Thank you for us and managing partners. But, but yeah, I've been, I've been.
So would you be willing to be our, our committee?
Absolutely.
I've just asked what the last bullet point is. Meeting rooms, project meetings?
Oh, yeah, we're going to have project meetings to work through, you know, the things that we'd like to do.
Oh, you're not thinking building?
No, no. No, we're still doing project design.
Well, I'll tell you what I'd like to see happen, because I've been with this thing through all of the big hearing we had.
I know, you have to do history, I can see.
I think we could, but a new administrative body in charge of us now, and I think we could approach them and say, look, could they give us this as, as for animal, put a tree on?
Yeah. But I think I'm worried.
For the, for the jubilee and call it the Jubilee Field or something.
Yeah.
And carry out the kind of things that you're saying should be on it, which will be perfect.
Yeah.
It's worth a try, isn't it?
Yeah, that would be great, you know, if we could do that.
Yeah.
You know, I think we will need, you know, your help and support to see how we engage with N N C and, you know, maybe perform some sort of group where we can come back to you guys and meet and talk about where we're up to. But we need to ask that vital question, really, you know, who is the decision maker? Is it George and his team, you know, if they're having this review, or what's their timeline for that review? If their timeline is, well, they're deciding by October, you know, and we haven't stated anything further. George has seen this, actually, Annabelle Capplebrook, as I said, walked around, she took that vision document with her. You know, I don't know, he's a very busy person, whether he's read or through, I don't know. But, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's worth a try, in my opinion.
I mean, when you look back to the history, you see that actually, it was ours in the first place. It was this change in 1929, I think, that actually there took being passed over to Eastern Hamptons, as I would guess, but nothing.
Northhampton County Council acquired title to it by virtue of the Liberal Government Reorganisation in 1926.
So.
Doesn't mean there is tomorrow, a permanent obligation.
Well, I think tomorrow.
So, on the last point, the meeting rooms, if presumably if Gerry arranges project meetings as a councillor, that's fine to use Flattened House, is that?
It's available, yeah.
Yeah. And the Flattened Field, I mean, could we ask N N C if an event could be held on Flattened Field? Does that add argument and weight to it?
It could do, but I think the first question is to find out what they're, what they're doing, because we could, you know, we could ask for that and then we could start organising it and then they could turn around and say, no, actually, we can't have it. I mean, in, when we've asked for it before from old N C C, it used to take them a month to six weeks to come back with an answer. When we had a form to fill out, so coming using the park, food festival used it and we used it for Christmas market, and it would be a six-week wait for it to come back to see that we could use it.
We, we need to fill in for licence application. We probably need to do that actually.
And we need temporary event licence as well.
Yeah. Yeah, we need temporary event licence.
Sooner the better.
But it depends on whether, who's, who's arranging that. If you, if, and I mean, you can't decide this tonight, unfortunately, if you want the event to be run by our town council, then that's something that we've got to see whether we can fit in and, and apply for licences and things. If you as a group have been applying for it, then.
We, we can apply for it, and I think we would. I think the key thing will be whether or not they will allow it. But I think by asking, at least we sort of beg the question, see what happens.
Yeah, absolutely. So is there anything, we'll talk about the jubilee idea in a second. Is there anything else you need from us tonight? We've, we've heard, oh, sorry.
I was going to suggest that we align that item in the agenda and take it next, because it seems logical wise.
It absolutely does. Okay, so.
With us, and it's still in our minds. Council Cheddar have already, in fact, made that very suggestion.
So, 214504, to consider a proposal to ask Northhampton's council to transfer ownership of Flattened Field to our town council in celebration of the Queen's Diamond Jubilee. This came out of a conversation about the canopy that was discussed last estate.
It's a platinum jubilee. That's a maximum area of, yeah, it's a platinum jubilee, but the Queen's green hat, I mean, that, that would be one of our thoughts, would be a great engagement for the topic. You know, if you could have that, I think in May, I think we'd be using it.
What's the best process?
I think it would be a very good PR for the new Northhampton.
Excellent.
Yeah, that'd be brilliant. Very good.
So do we just write a letter saying, please?
And Cheddar wants to propose it, and we're happy to accept it, because I think it's an excellent idea. We might get to this and potentially.
We can sit down and do that.
Are you happy to propose it?
Yeah.
Yep. So are we happy to vote on a letter being sent to Northhampton?
Yep.
Fantastic, there we are. Good job. Thank you very much indeed. Right, thanks very much indeed. Your rep in the air. Brilliant. Okay, so moving back to 214302, a report regarding issues of sewage going through a drain in Ashton Road. I think this is a perennial problem, but there's now photography evidence of it. Anyone have any issues or questions or?
I suppose the obvious point is, there was a proposal to put a pretty large development just off Ashton Road, and we've got that problem now. To what extent can it be exacerbated by another 120-odd units proposing them now?
Yeah, and that's.
I think we are perfectly entitled to raise that question now, in the light of what's just happened.
It's not, it's not just happened, it's been for years. It's been, it's been brought to our attention at this meeting and as a result of that, we should go and use it. Yeah. So, and that has been, that has been raised, the objectives the people have raised, but one of the points that's been raised repeatedly is that they can structure this now at the moment.
So presumably, we have an email from Northhampton saying they've asked them to be watered.
Yeah, so Andrew Waterhouse have come into it, and I think you've so raised that house in 20 odd meetings.
And it's been raised, I know, by the residents, that's right. But is it worth us writing to Northhampton?
I could ask Helen Harrison, because she was the one, I think, so I could just ask for an update.
Cool. We need to contact Andy Water as well or?
I don't know who she contacted, so I think I'd sooner do it through her.
That's fine. We've. Andrew Water have definitely been made away with it many times over the years, but it's not, this is not something that's just happened, is it?
Can I just make a point? I mean, she is aware of it, we showed her.
Yeah, but it's good to have a patron from us.
Exactly.
To her, say that we've had that. Good opportunity.
We need that support, yeah. And I have no contempt tonight to say that Andrew Water, I think it's on either on Monday or Tuesday. Whether they'll do anything is not mattered.
Next one.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll chase that up, councillor Harrison, and see where that takes us. Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. 214303, a letter from Glutton Parish Council regarding Animal Doctor Surgery, not having face-to-face appointments. Sorry. We might have missed you.
As I'm sort of double patty as a councillor on both councils, I know that what Glutton were hoping is that Animal might join with them in order to add pressure to the surgery, which isn't totally the master of its own destiny, of course, because it's part of a large group. But there's a real perceived problem, certainly in Glutton, and I believe from talking to other residents, in Animal and in other villages, that that surgery is simply not operating well enough. Although this might be, it can sound like a recurring theme, if we're going to have another 260 to 300-odd pounds of sewage in this town in relatively short water, how on earth is that doctor's surgery going to cope? He's not coping well. And so I, I urge this councillor to get behind this and write in some support to them.
That's a very fair point, and certainly it's been an ongoing issue for a long, the last year or two.
I'm very glad you brought through the matter. Councillor Capple, the letter was written on 23rd of June, has there been any response back to councillor from, to councillor Harrison?
I'm looking at fellow councillors. I'm sorry, you're right. I didn't bring it, I have to admit.
He has replied.
They, they have.
They have.
They have replied, I was refuting everything.
Yeah.
I think the, the better, better group is the support that Tom Thursday is willing to give.
Yeah, so, I think it's right, because as a group, from my modgy job, when I had a big issue around vaccinations, we all lived in town before I was councillor, only because I had my neighbours that were in the 90s, and I had a big issue with the group, and we're not the only town that has been, or area that's been subjected to the similar treatment by this particular government, and it is government. And I think it's important that we support Tom and everything he's doing to try and basically make them up their game in terms of what service we're being, what we're being provided. And in addition, and I'll throw this in, it doesn't help when we're part of a Cambridge shit commission crew, or we should be part of the Northhamptonshire group. And I know that's a bigger issue, but that's a bigger issue, that's why we put people in part, that's why they make their decisions on our behalf. So there's, there's issues I would have.
And it's problematic when we see Northamptonshire vaccination rates or whatever, but we're not part of that. Yeah. Just on that basis, news coverage this week of left binders in Stamford, is that going to change the way left binders are received? Their Stamford surgery? Their Stanford surgery expect, C C, C C Q, C C.
Yeah, it's something. The C C G, because they're C C G.
C C Q.
On the basis of all of patients in place. So presumably now's a very good time to.
It would be a good time for us to hand our voice to it, copy it, Tom, which is again what Blackthorn did. Uh, and say to Tom, we're, we're well aware that we're already on to this, but, you know, be assured it's not just Blackthorn we can worry about, this is we can actually.
Kind of my own respect for this issue, but can I also make sure that it's not sometimes the decision of doctors or staff that are working here. It's decisions that are made by a food chain. I don't want to feel that we're out there to actually work very hard on surgery. Because I know they've worked very hard. We can add it in flu vaccination, I say work very hard, of course.
So on that basis, Blackthorn's written to the C E O of Lexite Surgery rather than.
And we'll have to see this particular doctor.
So is, is it a presumption that we should write a similar letter?
That's what I invite us to do.
Saying that we.
Copy Blackthorn. And all the nurses that have said, probably to copy in Blackthorn Parish. Yes, it's a matter of courtesy that, that we picked up the bad ones.
Because we, we have made the point, of course, about the extra campuses, although there are some in Blackthorn. Um, we didn't actually make that point in, in our letter. So it's a perfect opportunity to just go a little bit further and say that you see this getting worse.
Do we want to draft a letter and send it or do you want to draft it?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I, I know that in here you've got some specific things that residents have come to you. We haven't got that.
No.
So it's more of a support.
In general term.
Yeah, and the more general, so I'll put something together.
Brilliant. Excellent. Do we need to vote on that? Are we happy with that? Everyone, is everyone in consensus?
Just a minute.
Fantastic. Brilliant. Excellent. Um, uh, to receive a suggestion from a resident about the senior Mark Stone on Blackthorn Road. That's a very interesting report and I hope the resident happens to be able to. Um, I've, I've lived an hour thirty years. I've gone past that number of times I've never seen him before, which is embarrassing. Um, and the thing that makes it particularly interesting is it's because it's Mark Stone of the Poppet Guardian. I think they were to be with this building in some shape or form. So, um, my suggestion, if it's all right with everyone, is that we ask the residents to do some research and read the listing form and see what we would need to do to ask for it to be listed, which is quite a lot of work because I've looked at it already, which is why I'm asking someone else to do it. And see if we can come back with something in September to take that forward. Is everyone okay with that? Certainly seems something worthy to, to have on. Is the resident happy to do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Long summer holiday. Thank you very much indeed. Um, uh, to receive an update on the Blackthorn Road crossing and decide further action.
Um, yeah, this was just, uh, it was supposed to happen in July, um, but we, uh, found out that, um, the new authority needs to approve it as part of their tactical budget. So it's been put back, even though they've got our money in a tadde since April, for the full cost of the work to be carried out. It still needs to go through their process to get authorized. So I don't know when it will happen.
It seemed like it's been put off two or three times, but.
What is it? Sorry, Adam.
It's a cycle way crossing, um, up towards the primary school. And the decision was taken earlier this calendar year or late last calendar year to approve quite a large amount of our section one oh six money to pay for the work, lots of engineers, dig rounds and so on. Um, and the work's been postponed two or three times now on the basis that Northhampton haven't gone through their own budgetary process. So effectively it feels, I may say, that, you know, we paid a bill to do some work, but it hasn't been done yet. Is that simple version?
Yeah.
That's all right. Um, do we ask our councillor, I'd ca, warn the councillors to step in and ask questions? Is that? Uh, I've already contacted Sir Robert.
I think I've seen it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it changes.
Whatever happens.
Yeah.
So should we just need to keep an eye and I suppose look back in the September meeting and see if anything has happened? Okay, um, Northhampton to receive an update from Helen Harrison. Um, there's one in the pack and I was in an email conversation with her about something the other day and she's asked me to add a few extra things to it. Uh, she's been in contact with residents at Stoke Door Road and Christopher's Drive, sewage issues. Ashton Road, Athena Way as well, which is the new development by, uh, the Northern. Yeah, that's right. Fourth Street verges on Comstock Road, Blackthorn Road, the repainting of the district crossings, also along as housing garages, which I know we've been chasing as well and they've now started to be improved on some of these roads. Um, and she's also has information about what she's been doing as executive member for Adults Health in Welby, which I'm very happy to pass on. Um, but does that have any oversight with doctor surgeries in that sort of thing?
No, they rejected it from us.
Not worth copying her in the mind.
And we copied them in and we just sort of remind that it's nothing to do with us, so.
What's happening?
We'll get the same.
Okay, fair enough then. Um, and to receive a letter from councillor, councillor House Portfolio Lead for Rural Communities and Locals, which I think everyone has a copy of. I suppose the question is, we're coming up to the rural group, uh, as the last, almost the last item on the agenda, is to see what we do about that. And, um, probably worth leaving, can we get to that point perhaps, vote from the agenda?
Give me time to think about it.
Actually, uh, item twenty-one forty-five oh one, received a large report. There's lots of stuff in there, some crime stats. Obviously, it's not a catalytic converter.
How do you?
Sorry, another catalytic converter has gone from somewhere, um, in the last week or two.
Better to the ground.
There we go. Um, or. I'm sure councillor Full could give us police stuff, but he's not here, so we can't. Anything we ought to need to raise from the platform?
Only that, um, the welcome back fund things are still being looked at, even though there was a mad rush to get.
It was days, wasn't it?
Yeah, we've got days to get our submission in and that was, I don't know, two, three months ago, still being looked at.
We'll all be welcomed back at time.
What's the unit of Rushden Lakes?
Um, it's, it's, um, it's a, it's a, it's a shop. It's next to the cinema, near the cinema. And it's, it's an empty shop that it was Eastern Hampton stroke, the Enterprise Wood had got, um, to promote, um, sort of local, um, food companies, you can buy local produce in there. But they've also got, um, uh, they advertise jobs, so to help people with, um, C Vs and they've got lists of jobs that. They've got a big banner up about Arnold. What, what some of the other town councils in the Eastern Hampton area have done is they've gone along with the councillor just half a day in there. If you've got something that you want to promote, they're happy for us to go in. They also sometimes need a bit of help and cover. Um, but yeah, it's just a unit that they've got. They've got it for a year. I don't have, um, but yeah. If you go down to Rushden Lakes, it's just right down the end in the cinema.
Yeah, is it? Okay. Um, next item twenty-one forty-five oh two, terms of reference, communications, working party and transport working party. I don't think that's anything to scare anyone at any events. Um, are we happy to approve? Do we need to vote?
Yeah, you can do. I mean, the communications one, I think you took two words out.
Yeah.
I can't remember what they are.
I can't remember what they are. That's what's over it.
Yeah.
Um, it was to make life easier in some shape or form.
I think so. It was, I think it was it to do with the press release. We just take press release out.
That's what it was, yes. Yeah, we just move press releases. Um, and the, the Transport Working Party, uh, Hawkins, the chairman of that, um, it's just to sort of provide a process, uh, which I could touch on briefly later on. Um, so if we're happy, is anyone willing to phrase we accept those? Second, everyone happy with that? Fantastic.
Who was the proprietor?
Rupert.
And Jerry.
Gerry, second. Um, to consider ways to advertise for vacancies in our town council, they'll co-opt new councillors. Um, I've been talking to a couple of people recently, one of whom is, is younger than I am, which is great news. And, and young female is exciting. She's very keen. Um, we just need to go through the right process to co-opt her officially, which we're putting in action. Um, we're also going to try and put something in our life in the next, well, it's going to be going this week, but it's September, that's the deadline. Which, um, Luke and Liz are very generous, we need some words for. I've got that edited down, the editorial process, they might as well, the photo. Hopefully it will get through into something positive. Um, and yeah, one of the rules, have short videos as well on our Facebook presentation. So maybe we could, sometime in this online. We can do something with Rebecca briefly, that's a possibility, ten to fifteen seconds or something like that, just to see if that works as well.
Yeah.
Brilliant. Any other ideas from anyone?
I just thought that, so those little fire pieces that we did, um, are they going in under a banner of what's it like to be on our town council? Uh, we have vacancies now, sort of thing?
They're going to go in a broad banner. I'll send you when I finish the cases. Uh, they're going to go into a broad banner, I think. Um, but it might depend what copes with the editorial cut from our life. We haven't had a lot of experience with it yet.
Sounds a lot.
Yeah, so they've asked for something that's between two and five hundred words. And last night we're on fifteen hundred. We're now down to nine hundred and seventy, so it's a, an ongoing process.
I, I would say Facebook's the best place to advertise, as this, these positions. Doesn't even have to be an official sort of job, because if you have advertised jobs, that doesn't matter.
Comment. Hopefully we can take the text in the annual life bit and add that to something we did.
Yeah.
Can we use it as a try and call?
We can, but we can, we put lots and lots up there in March, April.
You really need to stand and watch that, to go through its process. Um, we have, I mean, last year we did.
Did a lot of that.
We did a lot last year. Um.
Some interest.
Yeah, I mean, it's easy to do. I mean, we can do it. Yeah.
And the annual jobs, we've put volunteer vacancies on that, so.
I do.
We have them. We might use, I'd say, because I'm looking to Facebook and I keep us specifically looking.
Um, uh, we've done the Jubilee, which is great. An update, plans on the new transport study, um, uh, it's sounding particularly exciting. Everything is with the communications group. We've used most of the advertiser, uh, information coming up in the next week or two, uh, to ask people for feedback on issues they think that transport was in Alder. Uh, there's an online form on the website that Rebecca's put forward and you've asked people to use the online form or write in with problems. Just to see over the next month what the issues are, put that together in September, um, and hopefully start, um, that, well, that's exciting, scanning, scanning something up for the idea of getting some consultants in. I had a chat with Sarah Baum a couple of weeks ago, um, everything, every decision they make about roads, the future and everything has to be data driven. So we need to get traffic counts and the more we can prove we've had consultation with residents, police, neighbouring councils, et cetera, the better. So the next couple of months are all about that process.
Did you say that was tied on, time comes up, what's on now?
It will be soon. Yeah, it will be soon. It will be soon. No, you haven't. It's September. Um, okay, this looks much more exciting than it is and I had a very interesting conversation with man from Western Tower this afternoon. Um, can you waggle your, there we go, come a little, you waggle your mouse a little bit.
Where do you want me to put it?
Waggle up, up a little bit, there, perfectly down, 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 come down about two inches on there.
Near the red line.
Yeah, near the red line. That, that field just south of where you are now is the field in between Cotterstock Road and St Peters Road where they're hoping to put lots of houses. Um, and as such, there are two power lines that go across it, which they really like to move underground. Um, if you go for the middle red line, there we go, if you come down south a bit, there, right there, there is a power line, a point, a telegraph pole. Um, what they're hoping to do is to connect to the underground power line that goes around the rugby club. Um, dig a hole around that power line. Put that power line underground and then dig it across the field and then take the other power line to the west down as well and put both of them through a ditch. Their question to us is, are we okay with them digging a hole around that power line, which they think is on the rugby club land? I've been, had a look at it. I think it is. I think it's on the other side of the ditch. Um, but their question is, are we okay with it? They estimate it would take three separate days to do it. Um, potentially all at the same time, but more likely three separate interactions, a hole being dug. So joiners or linkers doing something and then something else happening and the whole being filled in. Um, in the end, it would all be magical and lovely, apparently. Um, I don't know whether we all need to ask the rugby club.
We have the land.
We have the land. I'm not even sure the point is.
It's full. At that point.
I think it's our land, all in deeds, but I think the power line might be the same bit. It's something the estates group are doing their grand tour around it tomorrow. So it's something we can look at.
Quick look at.
Yeah. Can, can the estates committee give permission once we've seen it in our meeting next week?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, there we are. So that's, that's what it is. They're very excited about it.
About that.
Um, there's a lot of emails that didn't make any sense, but I think that's what we do. They sent the plan today.
Red existing and green feature.
Oh, no, don't go there.
Oh, I see.
Reds, no, red's existing, green is slightly more powerful. The green line goes to Langston Drive. And he got very excited when he found Langston Drive wasn't in Alder. That was most of our conversation. I think Toby, Toby works in Ketterick. I think he'd like to get out to Alder more often. He's never been here. Um, he's going to visit, it's, it'll be a nice conversation. Not much of it was about power lines, but he's a very nice man, I think. Um, brilliant. So we'll look at that tomorrow and see what's going on.
There, there's also going to be a tree work, I think, done, isn't there? It says some things on that other document.
Are they? No, that's, that's a different location.
Right, okay. Is that our reaction?
No, that sounds like for mine.
Right.
So I don't know if it's got anything to do with us, because that's what confused me. Um, next item then, twenty-one forty-five oh seven, to consider O T C declaring a climate emergency. Asking the local M P to support climate, that ecological emergency, going to Parliament and promote, having done so through our public speaking chat.
Um, I have that on, Luke, you have it forward. Yeah, I've got a bit of preamble, which I'm grateful I'll just say. So, um, the point of declaring a climate emergency at town parish council level um, is to take some of the first steps towards a coherence and I hope embedded, uh, approach to achieving net zero carbon by twenty fifteen or sooner. Now, making the declaration itself is simple and, and it costs nothing. Um, there's a website called climitemergency.co.uk where Alder Town Council will feature on a list uh, joining the ranks of Northamptonshire County Council, uh, Corby, uh, and nearly three hundred other unitary town and parish councils. Yet the impact of this declaration is, is more powerful than it seems. Uh, it demonstrates, demonstrates local leadership on this, this important issue. Uh, it's the beginning of an embedded, um, embedded, sorry, a climate strategy into our governance and shows resolve, uh, to develop a corporate and development strategy for climate too. Uh, and surely, um, we know that it is at this level of governance, uh, the town and parish level, uh, that the most impactful and, and public facing work is done. Uh, I also wanted to forget the context, uh, the Paris Agreement of, of, I believe, twenty fifteen. Um, agreed that a safe climate change limit of one and a half degrees warming, uh, was the absolute maximum we should allow. Uh, this will result in considerable flooding, agricultural change, weather, both hot and cold, and ecological loss, uh, that we might cope. We are currently on track for a three degree increase by twenty fifty. So I urge you to assert what this means, but please suffice it to say it's not good. Uh, and so much of the larger climate emergencies links to issues we're discussing at this, this very meeting, flooding, sewage on Ashton Road. Uh, poor accessibility to adult surgery due to N H S pressures, which we know get worse during periods of extreme heat or cold. Uh, and the heat resistance of new homes built in our town, um, does not often appear to be considered in the planning. So, so today I'm asking Alder Town Council to, uh, support the motion to declare a climate emergency and to do our own small bit in mitigating the approaching tragedy. Uh, this will be achieved in the other point of this motion too, which would be to, to inform the media of our decision. Uh, urge our M Ps on personal to support this, the Climate and Ecological Emergency Bill in Parliament, which he currently hasn't done. Uh, and also endeavor, uh, Alder Town Council to pledge support for the bill too. Uh, and for those asking what next, if we, if we pass this. And for those asking what next if we pass this motion, well, what follows the declaration, I would hope, for another meeting would be the arrangement and implication of a climate action plan, subject to council consideration, at a future date, but as soon as is practical.
Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. Any questions, queries, issues to raise about it?
So you have just proposed a transport survey. If we were to take the suggestion and declare for O T C that we think that there's climate emergency, will all future decisions such as to have a transport survey all have to reference? Well, my resolution would be that they all need to reference how they're addressing that.
Yes, in some sense, the, the call that's affected us of the world. Yeah.
Otherwise, what is the point? Because then every time you do some work on behalf of Anvil Town Council, say, and what is climate, climate impact, or that's it's built into a document that's produced. In the same way as you build in, is there a financial implication? I don't know, that, I just.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why it's a transport rather than a traffic.
And that was just good in the immediate novel.
The difficulty with that approach is first of all, how many of us are climate experts enough to be able to actually do the process that Lisa just described? I couldn't claim to be. I have to say that unfortunately, I'm not particularly familiar with climate emergency, but I've got an emergency bill, so I'm not sure that I will or wouldn't support it. So at the moment, I don't think I'd get, I would vote for this, because I don't think I understand it well enough. I certainly don't think I understand the potential implications for the council of this. It's not to say that I don't think that the climate emergency is a real one, not to deny that, like Mr Trump perhaps, but on the other hand, I think we have to be realistic about some of these things, and whether we are best placed to try and go down this particular road is a much harder question for us.
Can I be, so the C E bill essentially aims to put what was agreed for the Paris Agreement into, into UK law, essentially. Particularly to make it, I suppose, legal, if you like, that we aim to reach one and a half degrees rise by, by twenty fifty as a maximum. And the implications of that, it essentially involves setting up a national, a national assembly as well. That holds government's account, with government's ability to, to meeting that temperature rise. In terms of the, the things for, you know, climate having to be part of, of, not an agenda item, but something to think about in every decision we make. That would be something for us to decide what's appropriate for us in the later stages. It, it's not something, something that comes upon later on, but it would be expected to be a bullet point of consideration. And there are many tools out there, as mentioned, of the carbon load of, of, of the decision. So, you know, first, the mystery, I appreciate that's a loss, it's, it's, it's a new and quite daunting problem, but these mysteries arose with practice and I find.
Just on that one, I put on an email, I sent it yesterday. There was a project that we were told of a couple of months ago, which was a sort of benchmarking parish councils around the country's of the column footprint. It's immensely complex, and it's scary how they've got their details from people like Experian, et cetera. But now they've got to the point that the, the two snapshots I sent back yesterday, Awood's got a, a lower than national average parish footprint, mainly due to the end of the major roads or railways or airports, but our consumption footprint as a town is higher than the national average, which is something that we could talk about in the future about.
Yeah, my thoughts are that it's an immensely complex thing, and I certainly don't know enough about it. Seen evidence of it, but we won't, we, we've already said tonight, we've no real powers, and I don't think that we've got enough power to make important decisions. I think it's almost too big for us. I don't know how to describe it.
I, I would just say that declaring climate emergency is like the thin end of the wedge in terms of power. We're, we're at the lowest level of government, but we're at the first step. It is something that hasn't come top down, of course. These have bigger problems than us, but it's also something that goes bottom up. And the people at the top won't have the will to do it. They don't think it matters at our level. And so this is the first step of showing it matters at our level. I was saying.
Thank you, Peter. You're quite right. If the bill passes, if we'll implement, implement Paris Treaty in, in British terms, then if the lesson that's necessary for our purposes will be done during the course of the bill's passage through both House and Parliament. And once the bill becomes a act, it will provide a framework within which others can act. So making a simple declaration signals to the central government that we are ready and willing to help as appropriate and the way to work with that purpose.
Absolutely. I was interested in looking at the website you sent me. How many other councils have already declared, from, from towns to tiny parishes? If I may, my view, as he generally says, to, to consider whether we'll declare, I would say that the points that Val and David made are strong in terms of us thinking about it. Could we maybe look to an item in September, say that we decide which way to do, and in the meantime, all of us talk to residents and people around and see what views of the people at Awood are, because it's clearly a big statement on behalf of Awood. Is that reasonable?
Can we put some comments out, something we're talking about, we're talking about, and we're looking for views and opinions from those?
Yep, absolutely.
Is it, is it also where I can probably have, or we can have a look at some of these parish and town councils that have signed up to see what they've got on their website and how they are implementing it?
I'll come up with something that Rebecca can post out as well and see what's what. And if we can all actively engage with people to see, test the water, and then maybe make a decision in September. Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. Twenty-one forty-five oh eight, consider a request from Perciman Homes, takeover management, the open space in Play Area at Christmas Drive.
Well, clearly it's a new council, and this council may take a different view to its predecessors, but its predecessors have a long history of saying, get lost when suggestions are made. Because what you get off it is a relatively small committed sum, which might seem quite attractive at the time. And when you take on a high form obligation to maintain this equipment, which means that plenty of you've got the cost of maintaining it and adding it to your insurance, you've got the necessity to inspect it and everything goes with it. And there is little positive to be gained from it, because if it's there as part of a planning condition, the developer has to find a way. The way they usually end up doing it is setting up some sort of a residence owned controlled management company, effectively charging a small service charge to those residents who are directly affected by it, and they're going to get the pot. And that company is legally responsible for any of it, and it's set up properly. If the management company fails, the responsibility should revert back to the original developer, rather than it simply going into a bag and sending it. But I would say this is a relatively poison chat, so we might look attractive to say that we're doing our bit and we'll take you on this. I'd caution against it personally.
It seems sensible. Does anyone have a, a contrary view? No, so we stick with that?
Okay.
Fantastic. Brilliant. Financial matters, twenty-one forty-six oh one, approve the bank reconciliation balance sheet for budget for June twenty twenty-one. There's a monthly bank balance on there. Any questions, queries? Do we need to vote on this, or? Yes, person proposed it, please, are they happy to do so? Thank you very much, Jerry. It's on the second, it's on the second day, that's all. Are we all happy to vote and approve for bank? Thank you very much indeed. Payments for June twenty-one, a proposition, the schedule of payments for June twenty-one as presented in the annual paid up, and all related documentation and checks are signed. Do we saw sign checks?
Uh, no, I don't, but it's in there. Just in case we have to, if we have to.
I'm happy to propose it. Anyone happy to second it? Thank you very much indeed. Everyone okay with that? Lovely. Thank you very much. To approve the quote for seven hundred and seventy-nine pounds seventy, fixed box from Firearm, flattened house. You haven't got much choice, because they have lots of big words in it, saying if we didn't, it was compliant.
Yes, and, and this is, basically, the sensors just keep going. I think, I don't know whether Lisa's going to put it on the estates committee, but we are looking for quotes from other companies for maintenance. See if we can come up with something better.
That's not a good plan, since the die of the three is, and she'll be angry.
Yeah, it's good business to be. So that's something that we might consider next week in the states.
Oh, yeah, I think she's got a few quotes, yeah.
But in the meantime, we're not compliant at the moment. That's a bad thing.
Well, I think, yeah.
Evidence of work here.
Bad thing overall. I'm happy. Not wanting to get burned. I'm happy to propose we approve it. Thank you very much. Is everyone happy to go on that? Oh, yeah. Yeah, brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. To receive an internal control check report. Thank you very much indeed, Jerry.
And please.
And Liz, sorry.
Jerry's Liz.
He's a, he knows. That's great. That's received. Any questions or queries? No, brilliant. Retrospective approval, the list of payments for July at the September meeting.
Yeah, well, basically, you don't have any meetings in August, but then we throw in this emergency meeting to agree the list of payments. Yeah, it's always easy, people are on holiday, and then sometimes that becomes a big agenda, because people say, can you just put this on? Can you just put this? So my thought is, if the list of payments is shown to the verification of councillors, they go through it, they look at the invoices, we technically agree and pay them, and then it just goes through a retrospective approval in September.
Do we trust Jerry and Liz?
I guess the question is, do you trust them? Because we do. Question is, would the internal community to wear it?
But, yeah, you can retrospectively approve, approve payments.
Because if so, that's something that's happened.
Yeah, that sounds.
That's a meeting in August, and I recollect that that's exactly right. You end up putting on this one item agenda saying, you'll be ten minutes, and about an hour and a half later, you finally walk out of the meeting, because there's been so many extra bits added in.
And then it's also like, if people are holidaying, not here, it's not as easy.
Do we need to vote on that now? Yeah, I'm happy to propose that. They're happy to second it. We're all happy to vote for the retrospective. Jerry and Liz, we trust you. A grant application from the museum trust.
We're going to do to indicate an interest in other interests at the end of the stage, but I'm not going to, I'm now on the agenda. And we are on council representatives from the museum trust, so it's had to be much clearer.
So the grant application, am I, am I reading it correctly? Is it a request for us to take, give the museum a grant to pay for?
Set the space for the lease.
For the lease that we.
That we're. Right.
The short answer is that relative to the size of their budget, the amount of costs involved are very substantial. And they are going to struggle. And they spent ages and ages trying to get to the point where this council was prepared to offer them a new lease. They then found themselves confronted with a feel that was almost eroded the process. I don't know what will happen if this council turned around and said, no, or maybe half funded it, then we'd have to look for alternative sources of financing somehow, if they could. Otherwise, we're just getting into a situation where they can't afford to progress it. That leaves them in difficulty, because although they're being targeted to stay there for as long as it has happened there, we can't just get them out. They can't access grant funding, because they need a lease of a certain length usually to get here. Which was why we decided that we want to talk to them on the lease. I don't think what we had anticipated was that the cost of this new lease was going to be anything like as high as that, bearing in mind that at one level, they've already got to this. You might have thought that all that was going to happen was that somebody was going to read you it.
I think it's because it's old, it's pre.
But unfortunately, yes. It wasn't the original draft, although it's a hasty to say that it was a problem. I don't have a feeling I did. But, but times change, but very well.
Have they actually had the cost for this?
And I've, the, the cost has come through me, because basically what happens is with all of our tenants, we use our sister. I say to them, you know, we need to renew this lease, they turn out it, so I went back to the museum and said, it's going to cost you this much. And so, and it's because it's a very old lease, that's why it's on our money. I mean, it may be, I don't know whether the, I assume that the museum doesn't claim V A T back, do they? So I don't know.
Two, two thousand five, if that isn't.
Yeah, so I don't know whether it's worth you approving as a council that you will pay there solicitors fees for the lease, rather than giving them a grant.
Which we're the point you say is that we're routine.
Yeah, yeah, I'll close up.
No, no, but please. Can I ask how it is that the reserves on the application are quoted at ten thousand and maybe a set of accounts, which appears to show three sets of reserves of about ten thousand, which to my mind comes to thirty thousand?
I wish I'd brought some figures with me, but I didn't.
It's on there, I mean.
The short answer is, I can't remember what the explanation.
So they've got a number two account, a number one account, and a, a chart of some number.
Practical, it seems, because part of, I think part of those accounts, and maybe well, but I think part of those accounts in effect, what are they called? Committed money, in other words, it's been received for a specific purpose, but that's usually therefore accounts have to be provided for. I think another set of accounts may very well be money that comes through the friends of the museum and is there, or not directly accessible by the museum. But if you query it, you need to ask the secretary or treasurer of the museum. The problem then is if we go back and say, it's a very rigid question, if we go back and say, we need you to tell us this, we won't then have a meeting till September, and therefore another two months will pass without this matter being resolved.
So from what you just said then, David, why can't the friends be asked to pay this?
The short answer is, yes, the museum trust could ask its friends group about it, it could potentially try and seek grant funding. But it doesn't have the control. And I don't know what the terms of the answer would be, which is why I have to say that now I'm approached by the secretary of the museum trust, wearing my councillor hat. I suggested to her that what should be done is they should put in a grant application, which followed then I was just even.
Right, so can we propose, even though it's not on the agenda, that we pay their legal costs instead?
Which part of the consideration?
Yeah, considering it, yeah. I think other than that, than just hand them over two and a half thousand. Because it may not cost that much.
And do we pay V A T on?
We claim I'd be if we had to that.
So presumably we're going to consider the grant application, decide that a better option?
Yeah.
Is to offer.
We've done it with other people, they've got.
So are you happy to propose that?
I propose it, we.
Oh, Jerry, I've got to.
I'm just kind of, I'm about to lose it, really, just, actually, that's money.
That's true.
Quite understand, I mean, the, if you look at their income last year, when they didn't open at all, they received grant ten thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Yes, the ten thousand, of course, was the grant of, for example, I think, Q B eight. Yes, the £10,000 of course was the grant of, for example, I think QBH. Because it's COVID related, so it was very much a one on.
So that's the North North House or this whole house, do you know that?
Yeah.
It's not like they do, you know, what was that for, if not to pay for things like the services fees for the new lease?
I like the fact that it's a community asset, it's our building. I think we should just support it, we can support it in this particular way. And we can look at the, in fact, we can hand up VAT, and we can support the organisation. I'd like it to do so as a fan, that's my personal view.
Rupert, look, found any views?
So let me, let me clear that I understood properly. All of your options, give them a grant, or say no to a grant, that contrived to help by the deeds. Are those the two options?
I think there might be a third option, which is to ask them to.
Pay for it.
Pay for it themselves.
Yeah.
My instinct would be to begin by asking them to pay it themselves, and see what they do next. I know, I know it's a bit likely to come down the road, but if they have some means of potential access, or put in a grant application, I think that is an avenue which we sense they would pursue for us.
Paul?
I'd like to formally propose that we pay, obviously we pay for it to be done. That would be my proposal, I would need a second, from my view. Somebody then could come in with a counter, which would either be the one or two over here, which would then decide, have either override mine, or decide on the other one. That's my view, so I would like to propose mine. If that gets a second, that, it does, it doesn't, it falls, and then if we go to the next one, that's our plan.
Liz, are you going to second it, or?
No, I'm going to ask Emma if there's a set of legal fees which Andro Town Council would also incur on its lease.
This was the cost of preparing the lease, we won't, that, that's it, so we won't get a further cost.
No.
There's a historic link, I mean, the two organisations, the council and the museum, are to some extent linked. They've always been part of us, we've got the grant funding to do the courthouse on the basis that we would house the museum. They do not, that got, got us the money, I think we have to pay it unfortunately. It's a, it's a town asset, it helps towards our tourism. You know, they have to do it.
I'm not, I think we shouldn't support the museum in any way, and I think you're absolutely right, it's initial power of what we do, and we support them financially, to a great extent. However, you know, the money that we're talking about granting them is, is the money of the people that have, isn't it? It's, yeah, it's, they've already received, nearly done all what their revenue expenses were for, like in the last twelve months, as a grant, which was precisely intended to help, to support them over a time when they're, when they're not able to generate revenues, they can't open. So I don't, I just think, it seems to me that it's unreasonable to expect the public to pay twice, because they've paid, they've paid the grant of £10,750, which ultimately has come out of our, of our council taxes, taxes. It also supported the museum during a period when they had no income. I'm now proposing giving them another two and a half thousand pounds, which they don't actually need, as far as I can see.
Is, is there a halfway house here, that we take your proposal, and say that we'll pay half their legal fees, and ask them to fund the other half, which?
That's not my proposal.
No, we take your proposal and change it?
What's on the?
In other words, provided your proposal gets a second, and we will second it, potentially, just waiting to see if anybody else wants to speak. Seems to me if at that point, somebody wants to propose an amendment to pay a lesser sum, then we vote on the amendment, and the amendment is carried, which is lost. And then we go back to the substantive, if it's lost, yeah, that can be.
Anyone else want to speak to Paul? Right, so Paul's made a proposition, they're just happy to second it. Do I, does anyone want to make an amendment?
Rupert's terrified, what are we voting on?
We're voting, Paul's proposed that we pay the legal fees.
The total legal fees.
The total legal fees, which are estimated at.
Up to, maybe at cost of two, two pounds.
But we don't pay as VAT.
Plus VAT. And then it says up to two, two, plus VAT.
And then David seconded that, so the question is, do we then vote on that? Or do we amend it and say that we're willing to pay half the legal fees, and they find the other half, which is a halfway house?
What, are you suggesting that amendment?
I suppose I am, yes.
So you'll need to see if you get a second for that.
I amended it.
I'll second that, I think we should take the counter to the council, that there's been substantial problems.
So, what do we hear now?
You vote on the amendment?
We voted on the amendment. So we're voting on the amendment that we're offering to pay half of the legal fees to the museum, and effectively expecting them to find the other half. So all those in favor? All those against? Five to three. Thank you very much indeed. Right, planning matters, twenty one forty eight, I'm going to have to leave you halfway through some of this, because of my declaration independence, but I can stay for some of it. Proceed the minutes in the planning committee, the planning committee. David, do you want to say anything about meeting on this?
We shall call it the planning committee, you might think I'm giving delusions of grandeur, but just, yeah, the planning committee minutes are all there, I think we've got some questions on. Pretty much of them. It was a particularly lengthy meeting, because we ended up with applications regarding each one of the development sites in Andor, on top of what might be called the usual stuff. And it took a fair old while, and as you will see, it's resulted in a later item in the agenda, just by way of clarification. In respect of the land to the rear of the cemetery, councillors may recall that this came before full council went back to the planning committee. And the planning committee, it essentially looked at a draft response, made some comments on it. I tweaked the draft response, and then sent it back to Liz, so that she really logged it. I then got some frantic emails from Liz, saying, oh, I haven't done it.
Ever since.
Liz was, I think it was Lisa's office.
Oh, Lisa.
And yeah, this is really easy, we're going to do it. And yeah, Liz was asking me why I hadn't sent it yet, and I understand, but I did want to tell you exactly what, you know, until the big time, she eventually found it, for whatever reason. Despite the fact I sent two, if not three, lots of emails at the same time, and sent them to you, one of them had gone into junk, which was, I think she even found it the other day, but I hope that it was in time to catch it, it was a penalty. But that was the minutes of that particular planning meeting. And because we were considering the matter which had been given us at O four, we actually thrown the planning meeting over to the councillors, councillor Clark, councillor Holden, joined us, and it was a care measure, so we actually had a reasonable number of councillors present. The council plant, for obvious reasons, did not participate in that. We took the view therefore, that with this coming on our hands, it would be possible to put something together for full council to consider. In order for full council to respond to the application for reserve matters, which were affected in the.
Brilliant, thank you very much indeed. To receive an update following the meeting in housing twenty one representative, which I spoke about, many of you have had planning meetings, there's a sort of record of it, and I know we've had some more notes played from the residents around St Christopher's Drive. The general view, I think, is that it's better than it could have been, but there are still significant issues. Do you have anything else on that at the moment?
Probably not.
It has.
I have to say that the, the comments from the residents have been sent to the person from housing twenty one, the person and the architect.
Brilliant. Right, and the next item on the agenda, information regarding a piece of land and the Cottlesock Road development. I need to leave the room, so I'm going to hand it over to you, and we're going to have a watch on YouTube. Is it going to go?
I'm just setting off on DVD.
Not long, not long. Do you want to interrupt me? I promise while I'm listening.
So that seems to be, if we're publicly broadcasting, you're hardly forced to turn your machine on. To some extent, the item at O three is intimately linked to the item at O four. As those of you who have completely read the proposed response will notice. Because, I can actually, I'm going to write a piece of paper. The response to the application for reserve matters extends to some two and a half acres. And it will be noted that paragraph two of the section on site access says this, the proposed site access from St Peter's Road crosses land which is in the ownership of Andro Town Council. It has not given the developer permission to use it, nor agreed to sell it to the developer. Without access from St Peter's Road, the scale and development proposed to an all-traffic entering being from Cottersock Road would be unsustainable. Which it would, because I think that they would really struggle to be allowed to have 126 houses, or having to enter the city of Andor, Cottersock Road. I may be wrong, maybe our bodies wouldn't worry about that, if that took place for it. Now, I think, I'm not saying, that some paper would have been circulated in advance of the meeting about why we say that there is a strip of land which currently lies between where the highway currently ends in St Peter's Road, and the development site, which we understand is effectively vested in Andro Town Council. Because at one time, that whole site was within council ownership. I have no doubt whatsoever that the proposed developer will turn around and say, stop, nonsense. I don't know what the planners will take. Because whilst, for example, you can put in a planning application, in theory, in respect of land which you don't own and don't have an interest in, and they do actually have to put that on the form these days. They don't tend to take account of, quote unquote, private rights. Not really, sometimes, but they take into account issues of disputed land ownership. However, I don't know what advice their officers would give them. But it might be that their officers would say, well, look, if that is right, and if there is no second access, then we couldn't approve this application for reserve matters as it currently stands, because we'd have to look at it again, and obviously, where, you could have a single access out onto Cottersock Road. Personally, I suspect that if the planners essentially ignored that point, and determined the application for reserve matters without reference to it, the development simply called our bluff. And so if you think that if you were owning it and you can stop us, you take us to court. And if we were going to talk about that, that's something we would have to talk about in camera, either later this evening, or on another occasion. But that's what item O three was about. The fact is that we've been looking at it for some time, and we've taken professional advice and professional advice into the support of you, that we could claim ownership of a piece of land which is in effect a ransom strip. Now, that gives us two possibilities as a council. One is to profit financially from the ransom strip, and so you would develop this, you would pay, and so, by a substantial amount of money, and it will essentially convey to you a certain rising title to that piece of land, as we may have. Or alternatively, we simply turn around and say, actually, I'm not interested in selling it to you, we didn't want to see the site developed in the first place, we're not going to make it hard easy for you, find another way to develop it, or don't develop it at all. There is no obvious other access, short of them acquiring potentially a property, an existing property in St Peter's Road for its current owner, and knocking it down, and using that site as a, as a method of access. Considering the amount of value of the development, the developer might decide to look at doing precisely that. Certainly, and that causes some consternation, of course, because their entire site layout would end up having to be re-shored. But as you will see from the draft response, it's suggesting that it needs a fair amount of rethinking in any event if it's to get planning permission. And you will see that we've quoted a, a number of items, and actually started off with something that I think in practical terms is very important. Throughout the whole history of this thing, it seems to have been conveniently ignored by all of those that it seems to ignore it. But part of this site lies within the parish and that, and the rest of it lies within the parish and that. Now, well, just imagine, if you were the owner of a property, where your front room was in Blackton Parish, and your kitchen was in Andor. Would you pay your council tax, do you pay council tax for both? Where do you send your kids? To the primary school across the road, to the village primary school? It's, to me, it's a, it's a real issue, and it's an issue that you could deal with by so organising the site, with houses that are clearly wholly located within Blackton, and houses which are clearly wholly located within Andor. Whether anything will come of that remains to be seen, but it's an interesting.
Are we still talking about St Peter's Road there, while we move on?
Well, I've started to, to look through the sort of the wider issues, if you like. On-site access, we made a number of points around the proposals for site accesses from Cottersock Road and St Peter's Road, including having to consider the prospect that, despite what we say about owning a strip of land of relevance, if the site was to be developed with that access in place in any event, then we don't like the way in which traffic coming in measures are currently organised, because actually, it would cause vehicles entering the estate from St Peter's Road to be forced to stop to give precedence to vehicle coming out of the site, which means that they would be sat outside existing residential properties with their engines running, for however long it might take, because the idea would be, in essence, one in, one out, because you wouldn't actually be allowing two cars to pass each other. And our thought is that you need to reverse that, so that the cars that are having to wait, are the cars leaving the development, and you then organise the house flipping such that they are not in that station outside somebody's house whilst they're waiting to do it. It's interesting to note, actually, that one of the comments in the planning portal, from the highways department, is a rather astonishing claim that they don't approve of the proposed highways, infrastructure at that junction. Because they don't actually think there's a need, the traffic can't be there at all. So their attitude was, well, you don't actually need to create a one-in-one-out system, we just have cars, vehicles passing each other, because they talk about the
St Peter's Road.
Volume of traffic.
St Peter's Road.
Going to the estate. I don't know how many traffic movements they expect from the development of 126 houses. But for the development of 53 houses of Stokeborough Road, there was provision for 171 parking spaces. So if you actually double that, and then add on a bit, that would mean somewhere around 400 parking spaces. Just imagine four hundred cars leaving that development and trying to make their way out of that site entrance and then along St Peter's Road, which apart from its spatial condition, which not a keen specific issue, but it looks like one of the most important ones in town. And along his group, himself. Um, there's a principal problem, because most of the properties, at least a significant number of them, situate between the new road junction and the kind of, the bottom of the hill of St Peter's Road. Quite a significant number of those properties have no off-street parking. So of course everybody parks in the road, which turns the thing into something of a silverstone-like chicane, certainly you don't quite approach it with a sample speed, it's a physical sensible crawler on there about three miles an hour. And that's with the existing traffic. You try putting anything else in there. And in particular, you try and put in construction traffic down there. Now, I don't quite know whether you even get a lorry past some of the parked cars in there that easily. But it appears to be the developer's proposal that traffic that is actually going to service the construction of the site would enter the site from St Peter's Road rather than from Cotterstock Road. Although my understanding was that the outline planning permission suggested it should be the other way around. Uh, I've no idea why they reversed it, other than the fact that Cotterstock Road, of course, is close to a school. And relatively close to a bend. And arguably, traffic approaching from Cotterstock Road actually might approach considerably faster than it could do down St Peter's Road.
I'm just mindful that we've seemed to have gone into the next item and Ian has left the meeting.
Well, it means a meeting for both, because you couldn't really discuss the reserve matters either. We, and I don't think you can take, in a sense, you can't take one of it in very easy way. Although if, if other councillors feel that we should look at the issue about the piece of land.
I think we should just make a decision separately on that.
Um, in that case, it might be appropriate at this point to invoke, and I think he'll write in saying it's standing on to three, um, to actually go into camp.
I don't know how I'm going to do that. What, can we leave that to the end? Because I think once I've come out of the future, I will have to.
Which is why I was trying to do it the way I was, because I think if we're trying to end up doing that, it gets very complicated. We have to cut the public forecast, apart from which, answer card, I won't think there's something going wrong with this equipment, because you can only follow us.
So shall we go to the next item then and approve the response?
So, um, approving the response is really where I've been for the last few minutes, as you have gathered. Um, and part of that response, as I indicated earlier, relates to the strip of land that we say that we own that, um, borders the access to the site. But we put in, uh, into that draft and most of these issues arose from the discussion we had in planning committee, although one or two occurred to me subsequently. Um, and one or two owe something to having looked at one or two responses from residents, for example. So we've got headings to do with delineation of parish boundaries, which I've talked about, matters to do with site access, matters to do with infrastructure, which includes the point that, as it stands, you could get from St Peter's Road out onto the Cotterstock Road by driving through the site rather than having to potentially use the junction between Blackham Road and Cotterstock Road. My fear is that actually people would prefer not to use that junction, because it's something even worse than it currently is. And I very well prefer to, to use the estate as a wrapper. Uh, and I think, yeah, the original set of developer-produced plans we did consulting indicated that there wouldn't be a through route in order to, you could access the site part of, of Cotterstock Road. You could access another part of the site of St Peter's Road, but you couldn't get between the two by car. But obviously there would be footpath, there would be self-evidence and so on for residents internally. And I think that's actually quite an important point to me. I would say including bits about the necessity to pushing things like footpath link from the development to the existing footpaths in Cotterstock Road itself before you actually start the construction work on the site, because otherwise these things get left. Houses start unoccupied and you still haven't got the footpaths.
A couple of points came to me, David, which were that I thought we specifically said we wouldn't ask for a play area at that meeting. Do you remember that? Because you, of exactly what we just agreed at first, that eventually that's what always happens. And the feeling was there were, there was adequate play equipment within walking distance. So I was surprised to see that in there. And then the other one was that Luke's, Luke brought up that the design of the houses, you have to provide wording for me.
Was it the distribution? Was it the distribution of the social housing?
No, oh, you did have that one, but it was something to do with the carbon footprint of the housing. There's no requirement on the developer, or the developer hasn't committed to certain standards that you thought.
Oh, yeah, passive house, that's what I was on about, yeah.
Yeah, and that isn't illegal either, so.
You're right, the second point wasn't, and that was more moving in the construction, my car. Um, and certainly, I appreciate.
I think they, I think by law they have to put an open space play area.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, yes, as far as that play area is concerned, I think that we need to divorce two issues. One is, should there be one? And the other is, who is responsible for it? And we've already taken the policy decision here as a council to say we don't want to do any of those things and that was something that's been said about here. The developers' original plans, I might be harking back to that, but of course that produced a number of iterations during process of applying for outline permission and doing a consultation with private, resident matters application, had shown the existence, not only of green space, but also of playground. And certainly a number of residents have noticed that the latest iteration is by the city government, still on the website. Um, it's vanished, it isn't there anymore. Now, we may say to the view that because we wouldn't want to get saddled with it ourselves, not working for it, but we would want to take it on. We might say, well, against that background, let's, um, not press for it in the future at all. But then if you don't press for it, you, you finish, you've got, you see, you've got, you know, a lot of children on the site of a hundred and twenty six houses. Um, and they will have to go somewhere. And yes, they can go to places, I mean, there is some play equipment on, well, they call it pre-grad, pre-grad development. Um, just play equipment to obviously the wreck, watching into St Peter's Road, he wrote. But have we done that? Have they done walk or cycle? We will be happy with the idea of people cycling down St Peter's Road, which is a narrow road at the best of times with the buggy issues I've previously described and blocking traffic. Or are we going to have a lot of traffic to parents, feed their children off-site because there's no playground there in order to take them to these other places? Thereby causing more of a car than foot for anything, because that seems to be the thing we talk about too much. Um, and also creating extra tragedies. So on balance, I decided that perhaps we should say something about the, for the playground. But I'm perfectly open to the idea of removing it. I think the only thing is that this has to be in, I think, tomorrow. So any editing on that can be made.
Yeah, I think it's, it's called a LEAP. Um, and it's, I don't know, something to do with, um, an area for children to play educationally. But I most, in all of the section one O six agreements I've seen for all the developments here, there is a LEAP specification. Um, so I think they will have to provide something.
Well, I would expect them to have to, and of course that's one of the reasons you can't use playgrounds, I presume.
But they will also have to maintain it. I mean, they will off, I'm, I'm sure they will offer it.
At some point, the developer will come to us and make a proposal, just as a ceremony would do.
Yeah.
Probably with precisely the same result, I anticipate.
In fact, they may have already done so and we may have had it on a future meeting.
Right. And, well, perhaps not specifically in the.
I can't, I was trying to think, we've definitely had it on an agenda since I've been here and I can't think for what development that would have been, other than that. We've not had anything for Stoke Doyle.
I think that the one you're talking about might have been, um, in relation to the, the road pre-grad.
I wasn't here when that was.
Yeah, not when it was built. I think it was done more recently. But I may be wrong, but I've got a reference.
Just got a feeling.
At some point we were approached.
Yeah, just got a feeling before they're out of my planning.
I think that was beyond that stage. Whichever. Um. So yes, in terms of the headings, we've got delineation of parish boundaries, matters about site access, matters about infrastructure, which are pretty seldom external, uh, amelioration of the open nuisance. Although they have sought to sign houses some distance away from the development to treat the plant. The question is, is that going to be sufficient? Will they need to do other steps? Now, no expert on these matters, but I would think potentially a substantial tree swing, for example, might make a difference. Certainly, it needs to be looked at rather more than I think they have. Amelioration of nuisance and constructions and construction hours. There is, I think, a typo in one of the developers' documents, because the way it's written, they seem to be suggesting that they do want to carry out development on certain days and places, but I think the word not might be wrong. Certainly that didn't go very well with environmental protection, we've already commented. I've put in something about impact on existing roads and, and so on, to Cotterstock Road, it has been raised by a number of residents who are affected. We made a point about the actual design of those, which, um, from what I could see of the plans, were pretty uninspiring. Um, and at times, there seemed to be long roads and properties with their little distinguished, we seemed to be a bit of a misstep of duty to them. Um, so we think about, um, some diversity of streets and, and, um, we put down a, a very little one line about social and affordable housing, but that's mainly on the basis that actually it seemed from the eye level that's a plan to, that actually there is close to forty percent, even more than forty percent social and affordable housing, just watching me.
Just in that point about the housing design, are we able, it may, because you mentioned town and parking, are we able to make a comment about, just a comment around houses of water blockages, which is causing a number of issues elsewhere in terms of, because that creates more parking on developments. It's happening in a lot of towns in the area where these houses, four, five hundred houses are not being sold. And then people are converting them into mass water blockages. Can we have a, um, a line in the head that says, you know, we discourage um, these houses being used for HMOs, they're called HMOs in the German term. I just wonder if that was why I mentioned it, that the planning mix up, but.
Yes, um.
That I think we want to discourage that, want people to live in houses that are fit for, um, uh, their use. Also issues around parking will just take some of it.
Yeah, um.
And throw that out.
Yeah, well, it, it is a, it's a fair point, um, and it could be added in too. That whole section of the design materials, that's something else as well.
Um. Is there any way to control that?
There is, they have to, if they're over, I think the thing is, they might put a covenant on, a bit like my allowance, I carry on this.
Okay.
You can't, I carry on certain things. They might say that, that they want to lay a restriction on, it's a planning restriction on that.
It's not uncommon for a developer to do something along the lines of that there should only be essentially a, a single occupancy, do they? Designed to.
You have to provide a lot of, of house.
Trouble with that is.
Certain number of exits.
The trouble with that is, it's up to the developer to enforce it. And once the developer sells these properties, it has absolutely no interest in proceeding to enforce.
Planning authorities can make a restriction.
Of course, the planning authorities, whether our laws about houses and microoccupations as well. I mean, again, it's a slightly broader point to me.
How does that work? Say, say you've got a family and they've got fifteen kids.
That's different. It's not a house for occupancy. House for occupancy is one where you've got, you've got basically, you've converted the house internally. You're basically making investments in what is should be a house for family. Even though they've got like nine, ten people living in it, that are all separate entities.
Um, so there is that. And there's also a point which we discussed preemptively in planning over the years about whether it would be possible to, um, impose restrictions through the planning system to stop subsequent applications, to amend two-bedroom properties to three-bedroom properties, three-bedroom properties to four-bedroom properties, and so forth, which promptly destroys the kind of social housing mix that we've been forced to adopt when the estate was initially developed. Um, we've had terrible problems at times doing that kind of retrospectively with developments. Whether or not we should, at least raise it in this, I mean, that's what all you're born going, if we put anything in, again. Something we could put in, partly on the basis that there's nothing much to lose anyway. Um, we make new representations as to whether any of them will bear fruit, remains to be seen. But at least if we put in a comprehensive response, we've done what we can against the background of the got-out-by-bandage. So it's now down to matters of detail. Okay, maybe the access point there will be suited, but otherwise it will happen and the question may get better in the back here.
Can I just point out that there's three of these items where only received information, we've all seen it. That's it. The only, the only thing we're going to ask to approve is the response. And I've got time to drag it on and we've still got a chunk of agenda to go, so can we not just move on after the response?
It's a fair point.
Incredibly.
Well, we've got a response, we've had one or two suggestions of changes or additions. I guess the question for, for councillors, are we happy with the response as drafted? We'd be happier if we incorporated some of the points that we made. I've got to say, this group, because that was kind of adjourned, called by Paul, absolutely by himself. If there is, I'll try and feed something through.
Is it got to be inspired?
Got a feeling it has to be in tomorrow.
I've got an extension to the thirtieth, quite easily.
Yeah, I don't, we probably have got an extension.
We might well have got an extension, but I suspect we'll have to do it tonight. Yes, I know that.
Yeah.
When we go through this process, we're doing it on Blackham, where the issues are rather different. Um, yeah, got a little time. So, um, I thought I opened a bit more to this.
Do you want a proposal for it that that's our response plus the additions then?
I think we need something on there, so I think.
Yeah. I propose that's our response with the additional amendments, I think, or the obligations we make.
Of course.
During the course of the.
Yeah, of course, I do. And then, hopefully, no, words of favour, you know. Right, get them there back.
He's going to chat. I'm sorry, it's that far.
I looked at that comment, I thought, it can't possibly be the right time, and then I saw Val thinking and think, you have to eat.
Great one, David. I take it that these are, these are at this point our response to the developers' voluntary protection.
No, this is our response to their application for approval of reserve matters submitted to.
So in other words, our res, our response, which we've moved on, will be going for L N C planning.
So in other words, our response, we're just moving on, will be going to L N C planning?
Yes.
Good, yes.
And we're going to discuss that later on.
So, yeah, I've just put that in.
We might want to discuss that immediately before any other relevant matters are reported.
Or even do it right at the very end, because Ian's going to have to lead again. And I mean, technically.
Also, your permission is stuck in trouble, they need to leave now.
Right. Well, hopefully, we're still, we're still porous at the moment, but it's a bit like tangerine rock, so.
Oh, well, good on you.
We've lost the chance to the chest, so we're about to lose the chance of a right call, because.
We'll be quick.
I hadn't realised that when I looked at the clock and it seemed to be saying half past nine, I thought, no, it can't possibly be. I saw it, I went up and I thought, gee, perhaps it really is that late.
Thank you very much indeed, it's exciting watching. Estates matters. Most of it, yes, yeah, most of it. To receive the minutes from the meeting held on the twenty-second of June. Anything after that? I think so. Lisa and I had initially chatted somewhat about skate parks recently, which we can talk about tomorrow when we wander around. Twenty-one forty-nine oh-two, consider options for improvement of the basketball area.
Are you looking at that tomorrow?
Yeah, we are, but we can't approve any funding, can we? I was wondering if we might be able to get something approved today and then decide tomorrow if we want to do it, or is that?
It's a bit tricky because obviously.
Well, we can decide tomorrow and then put it through instead.
We have, we have a budget, ten thousand, but that is used.
So we'll put that off until the estate meeting next week or Tuesday tomorrow and put it forward for a set of that.
I'd rather that, because I think conversation around it as well.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that makes complete sense. Consider the Christmas market, which we should have on the fourth of December, we should have any restrictions. I suppose before we have this conversation, can I ask a question? What do we need to commit ourselves to financially?
At the moment, not a huge amount. There might, the only thing that we could probably start looking at is taking payments from storeholders. I mean, some we've already got from not last year, the year before, they took carry over. Some, and some will have already be wanting to pay. If anything, it's not, we haven't got to put out much money. I mean, this is only really put on, not for you to make a decision now, but to just get it in your minds.
Consider.
Yeah.
Going to say yes and no to those two questions, because I think we should do it. I should think, and I don't think we should be thinking in terms of restricting the size of it at this point. We may have to review that if the situation changes, but I'm hopeful that in, we're talking four, five minutes away. By then, realistically, everybody who is going to get themselves jabbed will have been jabbed twice.
It will depend on what, what restrictions are still in place, because the factor that we had was, and it was easier for Ron and Dan at the hall, was to be able to control the numbers. If we have to say that we've got to control the numbers and allow some social distancing, it's impossible.
So I understand that social distancing rules don't apply, although there was some talk on the radio coming out of the front end, so twenty thousand people, you'd really need to be able to, you know, get people in and prove that they've been done in jail. I don't think they're going to get twenty thousand people in the streets.
No, but it is still an issue, I don't, I know, it would be lovely to have, but we have really got to be mindful and careful.
Someone we need to at the moment to consider, and presumably at the moment we don't, so yeah, or no, we just.
And I say we should plan to go ahead on a restricted basis and review the position at the next meeting.
It, it, what the issue will be is whether we have to then start spending money.
Yeah.
That we might not get that. At the moment, we haven't got to.
Okay, brilliant, we'll have that just to consider and crack on. To receive an update from the Hub Working Party, thank you very much indeed, Liz, Val in her absence, for what we've done so far, and approve the recommendation from Mum and Tops Group, use the Hub from September. Good little.
Yeah, I hope you've read that, I didn't need to go through it. It's set to say that it was only after the meeting, during that meeting, that I really started to understand it's made, it's, it is more complex than you first think. And it was around that thing of giving exclusive access and how that can be done. So Lisa's not here to ask whether the yoga group is coming back, I don't know whether Emma, whether you've heard.
Sorry.
Yoga in the dance studio. Because we felt that anybody who has, is a long-term user of Flent House must take priority and that this, it's unfair to have the yoga group have to come through the outside doors of the dance studio and not have access to the hub if it's open to other people. So we started getting into difficulties around whether Tuesday morning was even a possibility. So that's why I've, I've written quite an open recommendation that we'd like to go ahead, but we only want to do it for a short amount of time because there's so many other considerations that we need to still work on and we can't guarantee at this point at this moment that it's Tuesday. But before it goes to the Baptist Church, we can know, but I can't say to you now that it's Tuesday, but I can't think that's part of your decision.
But we're just basically saying we're happy with the idea of a trial.
For free.
Yeah, for free on those terms, which seems actually reasonable. Is anyone upset about, are we happy to go ahead with that? Brilliant. Communications Working Party very quickly to approve the cost of purchase Love Animal stickers, this is an idea we've been having for a while. The idea is that we order a few hundred of, just the Love Animal logo, businesses are able to give them out with their customers, customers put them on their car, they drive somewhere, people type things up, they get the website, they come and visit, they spend lots of money, cheap advertising, it'll either work or it won't work, one of the two. To approve costs, I think the quote's two to three hundred pounds for four or five hundred. Education Working Party has no ability to spend any money, so we're just asking.
Two or three hundred.
It depends how many of you order and what size they have, it's either two or three hundred.
Yeah, there's lots of dollars, anyone's free.
The idea was you could put them in the back windows of your car, I mean, some of the businesses could put them on their own windows as well. And it just would be aware of O B A, hopefully, and us maybe getting people in shops to talk to their customers about that. It was just a method of doing that. So I'm, I'm happy to propose it if I'm allowed to. Anyone willing to second it?
Is that, do you want to do that?
Sorry, who's seconded it?
Liz, Liz, everyone happy to play it for? No, I think it's brilliant, thank you very much. And the second one touches on the point that Liz made earlier. If you look at various councils' websites, Village Horses have an online calendar, so you can see when it's booked and you can see when it's not booked. Our website providers, whose name escapes me.
Two Commune.
Two Commune have a system, it's fifty pounds per thing, so Q V H. With various rooms in the flat.
Yeah, it'd be Q V H, Alba Suite, Blackstone Room, Barnwell Room, Dance Studio, Hope, so it'd be six and twelve, so three hundred, but it's a one-off cost.
It's a one-off cost.
It's not a, and one cost.
And then you've got the, an online directory, people can see when it's free, they can start making choices and they've got get as nor through.
Yeah.
So we retain control, but it helps advertise when there are spaces, just in which is a sensible idea. So it's a one-off cost of three fifty, so including that.
Well, we get that back.
Okay, so three fifty.
But then normally, it would normally be net cost plus that.
So again, I'm happy to propose that, anyone's happy to second it. You've got that first, and then those four. Brilliant, everyone, thank you very much indeed. Rural coordination group, let's go with, you don't have a minute, do you?
It just says to receive the minutes. We did talk about the fact that we had a letter earlier that might have a relevance to the group. I think it's fair to say that since the last meeting, I've been somewhat beset by what issues are going away and coming back again, which create what issues both sides have. So I haven't much in relation to the passing due. Since that meeting, it'll be a matter of taking things forward. But there's a couple of things at least that have come out tonight that we need to go on to the next agenda.
Just the point I raised, as mentioned earlier this morning, I went, I went to the sort of rural communities Zoom meeting that was for Corby and Kettering area. I've since had the minutes from that and some notes, but their next meeting, they've invited Robbridge, who's going to be attending, Chief Executive, and David Howes as well. So it seems as if, and they haven't really invited us because they've just said it's, they've copied me, but they've just said it's for the Kettering and Corby areas. So it might be that we should do a similar thing, but.
Well, it was a status that we'd be pushing as an open door, because if they wanted to go to Corby and Kettering.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's a Zoom one, so they technically haven't to actually go, but they are attending. But I think it might be worth, you know, trying to see if we can arrange for them to come to a meeting.
Can I liaise with you?
Thank you very much indeed, thank you for sharing that as well.
It was quite strange, because we tried to arrange it, well, did arrange it for Monday night and it was totally deserted. So we decided that because I was about to go away, we're trying to fit it in three days, so gave everybody three days, nobody fits in, twice as many people turned up. And then rearranged it because we had originally said in one, and actually it was a good response.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you for doing that. Correspondents for information, twenty-one fifty-two, employment law update, which we've received, there's, and then finally, to consider and approve two things, which I've added to the concept of the proposed letter, and then it's a good idea, the content. Does anyone have any strong views for or against? It just seems it's a good thing.
I could tell you it is.
Just look at your last sentence again, because you may need to, I think you made some.
The last sentence in the other letter, the most recent one.
But it's a bit too much recent.
Something I had last night. There's a good chance of this one. Clearly, this might be, you've got a previous response to the show, and you have the natural remains of it.
Is it just the word sell? I'm looking at the latest one. Take seller.
Really throw the clumsy sometimes.
Yeah, I think. So, so's gone.
All right, I have, yeah.
Yeah, now that one, I wasn't expecting that to be sent around quite so early.
Oh.
I got excited when I saw it. A little bit, I seen the revision of this, and I put a suggestion saying it's first step where Helen, Jason and Annabelle will be able to have a council at the earliest opportunity for exploratory discussions, how engagement could be achieved, which was suggested by two councillors who are here. So if people are happy with the concept and are happy with the content, we're happy to have a look at it. If anyone wants to make a change, I'll do so and I'll send it off ASAP and see what's what. But again, that would go to councillor, so it's something that he might have to pack up. Brilliant, thank you very much indeed. Any other relevant matters to report only? No, not at all.
There is a slight problem if you need them as well, yeah. Which is that we decided that perhaps we should write about this around St Peter's Road, do you want to get in camp? And it's illogical to do it right at the end.
That's fine, it's just information, that's all there is. What do we need to know about it?
Right, there seemed to have been some, some thought that we should have some form of a further discussion, I suspect, on where we go from here. It might be that where we go from here is to simply send the response off that we've sent, that we've approved tonight, which made certain points about that piece of road and see what happens next. And if that's all we're going to do, then we don't really need to go into camp.
Yeah, I mean, so long as those comments are passed on to the developers, which I'm sure.
Well, they're down to.
Yeah.
Find out.
Okay, yeah.
Brilliant, fantastic. Anything else to report? In that case, meeting closed. Thank you very much indeed, folks, it's been a long evening.